Video recorded and broadcast over local access channel 18 and through the town website at www dot eastham dash ma dot gov. Said I'd do it. All right, I'm just going to read a little quote real quick to start the meeting. There is nowhere to arrive except the present moment. That should help me focus, too. All right. So I'm going to begin the meeting with public and select board information, and this is information from the Board of Select Board or the public that's not on our agenda tonight. So is there any information from the Select Board? Jerry?
Yes, the Cape Cod Regional Tech High School has a survey that they would like citizens of all 12 towns to complete. And if you don't know about them, say, "I don't know," that's fine, because they're trying to find out what the community knows about Cape Cod Regional Tech. I do have a link, and I don't know where you want me to whom, should I send the link?
You can email it to me, Jerry, and I can post it on the Facebook page.
That's what I will do. That's one. The second thing is that the our Climate Change, Climate Action Change Action Committee, or whatever, is having a series, three meetings with, in conjunction with the Eastham Library. And let me find the exact dates. Hold on a second. On October 13th at 6:30, on October 25th at 6:30, and November 3rd is 6:30 at the Eastham Library. I think they're going to ask you, Jackie, maybe if you can, to say something at the beginning of the October 13th one. They've asked me to introduce them, the town's Climate Action Committee, on Thursday, November 3rd, as we, they will be discussing what they're doing, some education, what's happening with climate change and its effects on the Cape, and take comments from the public at the library. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Amy, yep, Amy?
Just quick, we haven't met, I guess, since August, right? Did we meet?
Yeah, it was like the 26th of August, wasn't it?
Because we, I know it was right before Windmill Weekend.
Windmill Weekend, and then we took.
And, yeah, it was a, it was a big hit. Everybody was happy to be back.
Really was, it was great.
The parade went well.
We got third.
The, hold on, stay tuned. The Beer Garden, you know, was uneventful, I think. It was quiet, not quiet. Jackie was working in there, I was working in there, Art was in there. I was, people were calling me the bouncer, which is kind of funny. I was checking IDs and putting wristbands on, and, yeah, it was, it was great. I think they're hoping to get, you know, more people involved over the winter, so stay tuned to listen for Windmill Weekend, people reaching out for more volunteers, so it can be, kind of come back maybe to its old glory with more events and more people involved. So, it was fun.
Thank you, Amy. Is there any public information not related to the agenda this evening? I think we have one first.
I have an announcement, Beverly Hobbs, and just a quick musical interlude, if it works.
Oh. Oh, I like this.
You should play that every time you appear.
And I would like to congratulate the Select Board for their amazing performance in the Eastham Windmill Weekend Parade.
Wow.
And I know, oh, oh, we want to stop that.
Dave, we may need technical assistance. This is amazing.
So, and I know you guys have been it for many, many years, and you've always done a great job, but we changed the categories a little bit this year, and so you, man, you came in third, which is well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think Jimmy actually gets a lot of credit for that.
Jimmy gets a lot of credit, yeah.
He should have displayed the trophy, really.
Yes, he really should.
They'll leave a great there.
Thank you.
I think Jerry.
Jerry covered the most.
He was handing candy out individually to every child on the Blade Road, I believe, and then running to catch up.
And dogs.
I don't think we even missed any dogs either, it was great.
We hit all the dogs with dog biscuits, not candy, dog.
No, it was fun.
Do you have a musical introduction now?
Not as exciting. It's just separate from the license, so I figured I wouldn't talk about that. As I think you all know, we have a grant holder in the Nosset Marsh that had a stroke and, I think, last April, so was sadly followed by a second stroke, and so he has given the grant back to the town. So we're actually putting together volunteer few days where we're trying to gather recruits to help us get this grant cleaned off to be able to start fresh and give it back to the community.
Nice. Where, which one is it, Nicole? I mean, where, where is it?
In the Nosset Marsh, so site N66. It's actually pretty much one of the grants right in front of Hemingway. You can't really see it because the grass is in the way. But we are working with Laura Ludwig, who's from the Center for Coastal Studies, and she is bringing her expertise to the table to be able to help us with this endeavor, because there really is a good amount of gear that's still out there. She does this for different communities, both towns, and actually works with the fishermen in general as well. So we're looking at the week of October 23rd, and it seems like the tides are going to be best Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that week, just because we want as big of a low tide as we can get, anticipating two, maybe three days. And anyone interested can reach out to us and sort of get their name on the list in hopes that we can bring as many bodies to the table as possible. Pre-warning, we probably will be out there the whole low tide, so we're just going to, once we get the boat out there, we most likely will be out there, just because we'll be kind of stuck.
They'll drop, it's a commitment.
Yeah, so it's going to be a big commitment. But we're working on trying to gather resources to have water and things out there to help keep people warm, food, snacks, et cetera.
Is it, I could probably paddle to and from it, right?
Well, this was my other option we have. We might have an option of putting one boat kind of on the opposite side of where this grant is, but it will be a little bit of a hike to get to it, and then that way we could run people back to shore.
Yeah.
If they have to go to the bathroom, because we don't want people, or they had an emergency and need to get out of there, but we could probably paddle to it, yes.
Yeah, Wednesday, the 26th, I could probably help with that and bring, bring a board that would be like big enough where you could even like have someone lay on it while someone else paddles.
Yeah, that would be awesome. I mean, and I'm gonna, I did email everybody, we did present the beginning of September at the Orleans Shellfish and Water Waste Committee, Laura was able to be there. Right now, she is out of state, I think she said Korea, don't quote me, but she's presenting basically to a big organization regarding her coastal cleanup efforts that she does. So this is something she's done for a very long time, is extremely passionate about, and I'm really thrilled that she's able to work with us and help. And so it's a very unique situation. Normally, the town does not take the onus of cleaning these grants up, but it was just with the situation at hand, he doesn't have any other family here, he's had some other people have stepped in and helped as much as they can, and I just felt that with what's happening and what's going on in their personal life and throughout the process, he, you know, his mother sadly lost his father as well, right at the same time, so just trying to put our resources together and as a community, help finish this piece of the puzzle for them and then give it back.
I'll reach out to you this week.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Nicole. And Nicole, you said you're going to be out there dead low. Is, when is the low, in the middle of the day?
I don't have, yeah, that's, the plan was to find a tide that we could be out there, because obviously sunrise, sunset, so we would go out after high and sort of make our way out with the ebbing tide.
Yeah, and ride.
So we can then start dislodging everything, pile everything up, get it loaded up and remove, and planning if we need two days, to have two days available possibly, but I'm trying to keep that schedule for me open that whole week, so we can be as flexible as possible pending just weather, what the weather is when it shows up.
Okay. Because I still have a boat in the water, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Because I can get, I can get in there, you know, through Cable Creek. How close is it to Cable Creek?
So if you're going up Cable Creek and you see the little strip of grants where they start going in, it's going to be on the complete opposite end of that. I mean, normally when I have to go to see all those sites, we park the boat on the Cable Creek side, and I walk the whole thing.
Yeah.
But in terms of like the lugging of the gear and getting people in and out for the bulk of the work, we want the boat kind of right where the grant is, but it's not impossible to move on that side if we are able to get extra resources to park something on that side.
Well, if it's still in the water.
Yeah.
I'll try to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. It'll be a fun project, I think. We're trying to make it more exciting and fun versus feeling it's work, so.
Or, you know, worst case, I have a canoe that you could probably get a lot of stuff in.
Yeah, that works. We walked up to it, it was quite the adventure.
I bet.
But we made it and back.
All right, thank you, Nicole.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay. Seeing no other folks that want to speak, we're going to move into the public hearing. So I'm going to read the introduction for that. A public hearing will be held on Monday, September 26, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the Earl Mountain Meeting Room at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway, and by remote participation regarding W O, recorder, 943-8095, from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, who requests permission to work at 315 Mill Road to install 31 feet plus or minus 1 to 4 inches conduit from existing handhole 21 slash H2 dash 5A to proposed handhole 21 slash H2 five B. Do we have anyone from N-Star EverSource here to speak? It didn't look like there was any.
Hi. Good afternoon, Marissa Jackson from the Rights and Permits Department at EverSource. So we received a request from a customer, one of your residents, to run underground service to their home. So in order to provide that service, what we do is we locate the closest existing equipment along the roadway, we run conduit from that existing pole, which we do have at the corner of Moore Lane and Mill Road, according to our sketch. I also took a ride by the location this afternoon. And we run the conduit from that pole, we install a handhole directly across the street, and that's how we provide the customer with the underground service they've requested. So, that being said, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
It looked like the only concern that we saw was just that the Department of Public Works wants to be notified a minimum of 24 hours in advance to discuss repair methods for the road, if the road must be cut.
Sure, that's no problem. Typically, we do, we do certainly deal with the DPW through all the towns for a repair. If you'd like, you can, when I receive the approval documentation, if you kind of just note that in addition to, as a condition, and I'll make sure it's addressed with our contractor prior.
Okay, Laurie, is that, okay, thank you, Laurie. Okay, is there anything from the board?
No, there's no one here to, from the public, was the only, my only question.
And I think we can call a vote? We have a question?
We have a motion.
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I've got it right here. Give me a second. I move that we approve the request of N-Star, doing business as EverSource, to install a 31-foot, 1- to 4-inch conduit from existing handhole 21 slash H2 hyphen 5A to a proposed handhole 21 slash H2 hyphen 5B.
Second.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we call the vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. So you are all set. And Laurie will make the update, I think, and we'll get that information to you.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right. Continuing with public hearings.
I have to sign something for that?
I have to read this one, right? No, it's okay. Pursuant to MGL CH 130 S 57 and 60, I'm sure I butchered that, the Eastham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 26, 2022, at 5:35 PM in the Eastham Town Hall, Earl Mountain Room, 2500 State Highway, Eastham, Mass. 02642, or YAZOOM, concerning the following aquaculture license. Gail Ashton, 120 Joshua's Way, Eastham, Mass. 02642, site N71, it's two acres in Nosset Marsh, and requests to renew license. And Nicole's here to speak to that.
Hello, I just would like to request the renewal of Gail Ashton's aquaculture license. She has been out in the marsh since 2016. She started off with half an acre. After her two-year initial license on that, she requested an expansion and did go out to her two acres, so she has fulfilled her two years again that she needs to be able to show us she's using that, that space, and I am requesting a 10-year license for her.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Is this the first time we've had a 10-year license?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope, usually it's two years initially.
That's what I, okay, I guess that's what was sticking in my head.
Yep, and then when they ask for an expansion, I put them back on another two-year license, no matter where they are, just so I can sort of make sure they're getting their paperwork and the proper licensing and for their expansion as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, and then I just need a motion.
I, okay, I will move that we approve the grant to Gail Ashton for site N71, two acres on Nosset Marsh, for 10 years.
Second.
Okay, we'll call the vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yep.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Okay, that will end our public hearings, and we'll move on to administrative matters. So first is the National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation, and we do this every year. We sign a proclamation recognizing September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And within the packet, which anyone can see, too, if they log in online, we have the proclamation there, it's also in our packet to sign as well. Any questions from the board? We just have to vote to, just agree to sign and?
And make a motion that we sign the National Suicide Prevention Proclamation for 2022.
I have a second now.
Okay, we'll call the vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. Next, tax abatements for town-owned properties, 580 Massasoit Road, 4550 State Highway, and 2555 State Highway. It looked like there was partial payments on these, and then once it switched over to town ownership, the abatement would kick in. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that, or is that pretty much it?
That's exactly it.
Okay. So we just need to vote to approve.
Well, I thought Jackie was going to pay the.
Yeah, well, I thought about it, and then Colleen said, "No, you don't have to do that."
You don't have to do that? Okay, I, I move that we approve the abatement for taxes for 2, that 580 Massasoit Road, 4550 State Highway, and 2555 State Highway.
Second.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we call the vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. You're off the hook, John. Thank God. Okay, next is the Martha's Vineyard migrant situation, and I wanted, there were a few members of the board that wanted to see this on here. Before we posted anything or kind of did anything publicly, we thought it was important to bring the subject up with the board. I think I'm going to pass it off to Jackie to talk briefly about what's going on on the Cape, what organizations are stepping in and nonprofits are stepping in, and what's happening, and how Eastham can help.
So first of all, I think we need to thank our neighbors in, on the vineyard for doing the yeoman's part of this job at the spur of the moment, literally, and taking care of these people as they sort of navigated a strange environment. But luckily, the governor stepped in, and all, all of the migrant visitors have been moved to Joint Base Cape Cod, so they have housing, and it's a centralized area so that people, all the service agencies can assist. And there are two agencies that have really stepped forward. One is the group that continues to work for Martha's Vineyard, and the other is the Housing Assistance Corporation in Hyannis, and they have really pulled together a network and actually are looking for anyone who wants to help either with the specific assistance folks need, are people who speak fluent Spanish and who are willing to drive people around, because there's lots of all kinds of appointments that they have to get to from Joint Base Cape Cod. So they're looking for any volunteers that want to do that on their website, and we will post this online. And also, Hack is taking donations that 100% will go towards the migrants, many of which have court dates in either Texas or Florida or wherever they came in the country, so they have to attend those, or they lose their, their status as legal immigrants. So it's a, just a huge situation to unravel, but everyone is trying to make people feel welcome and.
Jackie, do you know, are they all considered asylum seekers at this point? Is that, are they?
That's not clear. They all have different statuses, and I guess that's one of the, the big issues. You know, as Jamie and I talked, it's like, do we want to try and help in any specific way, you know, like adopt a family kind of thing? But they're really, every single situation is different, and some of them are not going to be able to work or stay here. They're going to have to, you know, return at some point to, to get their immigration status cleared up, so it's.
Yeah, I think there was confusion that they were illegal, and, and I think that's kind of a misnomer.
It is, yeah.
They came across the country, they're being processed, and they were sort of taken from a shelter.
Yeah, they were granted temporary asylum, and they all have court dates at various times, yeah.
So they are in the country illegally.
Yeah.
Contrary to statements being made, you know.
But if they miss those court dates, then they will be illegal, and that's, that's the issue. It's like, how do we get them back to where they need to go?
So one of the things that kind of stood out to us was supporting the organizations that have the resources to help each individual person in these situations get to where they need to go or access what they need to access. So we thought it might be good as the, as a board to do a post on Facebook instructing community members on the, how to help these organizations and support these organizations in that goal.
Yeah, well, it's fabulous.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great.
You don't need a motion on that, do you?
No, I guess I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was okay with the board and endorsed before I posted anything on the Facebook page. I have updated website and email that I'll put, but basically I'll use what was in your packets as a statement and post that probably this evening or tomorrow morning.
Great.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Jackie, too. She did a lot of follow-up work with different agencies to kind of navigate how we can be the most effective, so it was, it was great. All right. So next up is information on the upcoming fertilizer ban article. I believe the town of Orleans has had it.
They're doing it.
They're doing it.
It's also based on a Nantucket, yeah.
Originally based on Nantucket. Do you, did you want to speak to that?
Not really.
It's basically, right now, it's kind of being handled, the hope is that it's going to be handled at a higher level than just individual towns, because as individual town to put a all-out fertilizer ban, it isn't necessarily the most effective process. It's a message, though, and we're, I think the hope is that this message will be heard at the next level, so that maybe there might be moves by the region or the state to help with this call.
And I did hear from the county last week that the Assembly is taking it to potentially make it a county-wide initiative, which should be good. I think the, as Jamie said, the issue with things like this is that we don't, it's like the plastic bottle being, you know, it's sort of like all the Cape towns need to do this together, because if we don't, we're penalizing our visitors, I mean, our businesses, and people can just bring it from other places. So it's really important that it's sort of a Cape-wide kind of thing. But that said, we can, it's early days, I mean, we're not going to have a town meeting until May, so we could hold this aside and put it on the list of a potential town meeting article, and then see if the county comes to any action.
Now, you said Nantucket, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, you can go.
That Nantucket passed this at the local level, but when they sent it to the state, what happened?
I don't know. I don't know if it's passed through the state process, you know.
It didn't look like it, it passed through.
We know how long that takes, so again.
I'm just wondering with preemptive laws and things like that, it might be difficult, unless everybody.
Does it?
Does it, yeah.
It's a, there are a couple of things, looking at it, even thinking about it, enforcement, how, how would Eastham enforce it? But even looking at, Orleans is different from Nantucket's. Nantucket allows fertilizer for commercial use, no other. Orleans allows it for commercial use, and organic fertilizer for your own vegetable garden, but not for flowers or for, for rhododendron or whatever people want to do, and it really, you need to go through this with a lot of discussion within the communities to try and, and get it. I understand, you know, I want to, I don't want nitrogen in my water either, but even organic fertilizer puts nitrogen into the water, so there's, I think there needs to be a lot of discussion on this, and I think a county-wide discussion makes sense, because it is true. I mean, if we put it in and you just go drive up to, to Wellfleet and get the fertilizer and so forth, so, thanks.
Yeah, I guess I like the idea of retaining it as a potential warrant article, because I do think that it's important to go through every avenue that we have available for protecting water resources, especially having so much regulation coming down now on, you know, whether it be septics or runoff or different things that we're dealing with and we're trying to, you know, to fix with water quality. As I said, I think it would, it would be somewhat irresponsible to not put this on the table as a potential tool that we should be using.
And also to get a consensus from.
Right.
The town, not just us.
Right.
Let the, let the town decide. But also to send the message, you know, how do we send that message to, you know, should we be sending a letter saying that we would, we fully endorse that the?
Yeah, let's track it, and then I can let you know if it comes up.
Yeah, on the county, like, we can say something.
Agenda. Maybe send a letter.
But I'm going to look at the home, home organic fertilizer use, because I think that's interesting to me.
Yeah.
The clause to have that.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, I'm a gardener, I would not want to be barred from putting cow manure on my.
Right.
Garden beds.
Right.
And that's an organic fertilizer, just like chicken.
Yeah.
Manure fertilizers or.
Yeah, my flowers won't flower.
Yeah, no, they won't. They need, you know, our soil is sand and clay.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so, yeah.
You can't grow food in sand and clay.
Orleans, Orleans made one change, but they didn't do it for non-vegetable gardens. I understand, I think the key is you don't want it on lawns.
No.
Right.
I don't, which I don't have, I have weeds.
And commercial applications are even worse, because if I'm a wealthy person, I can hire a commercial company to come and fertilize my lawn.
But no, the commercial was for commercial sale, for, for sale of commercial goods, I thought. So in other words.
True value can sell.
No, someone behind, like, used to be behind me, Art Nickerson used to have the turnip farm behind me. He, because he sells the turnips, could use the fertilizers because he's.
So like an official farm.
He's, right, he's growing a crop for sale.
Commercial agriculture.
Commercial agriculture, there you go.
Which would be higher application than a residential, in theory.
Yeah.
It's tricky.
It is tricky.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
When we get the data on, for the CWMP, we should see if they have their estimate, they're not going to know exactly of how much the fertilizer and the road runoff is as a percentage of the total nitrogen.
Yeah.
Typically, 85% is septic system, and the 15 is split between fertilizer and road runoff, but the issue becomes if you don't want to have a fertilizer ban or do something on stormwater, you're acknowledging that you're going to overbuild your septic system, your sewer system, because you're going to have to remove more from nitrogen.
Well, we do have a bylaw on fertilizer use that the Board of Health was required to do for the water system. to do for the water system. So we already have that, and I can bring that to you. We can look at side by side.
Because when you get into CWMP, you get a credit for that fertilizer bylaw.
And that's why we did it, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'd love to see this happen, but I'd love to see it unified because it is confusing.
It is. And and I just think we have to ask those questions. I think that's why going through the town meeting process is interesting because, you know, there's public hearings and you get to ask those questions.
Yep. So, yeah, so let's keep it with an asterisk.
And while we're on the Orleans Town Meeting, there's been a tremendous amount of press about their short-term rental registration bylaw. And it, the newspaper articles continue to say, you know, this is a new thing, right? We've had that bylaw and requirement for 20 years. Yeah. So we have a rental registration program. It was patterned after Dennis and the town of Dennis. Dennis has had it even longer. All of our year-round and short-term rentals are inspected on a, an annual schedule, and I think they follow like the assessor's office, so it's a third, a third, a third. So every three years at least, you definitely have your home inspected, but they try and do them annually. We have over 1,200, between 1,200 and 1,300 properties that are registered, that pay the fee, they do a water test, and they do inspections. So that's for bedrooms and occupancy.
Do they still have to do the water test if they're on town water?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, but I just wanted to to let you guys know because I think the, some of these things are not well-known, but we've been doing this for quite a while, and I was really impressed when I first started in Eastham that with the staff we had, we were doing that kind of ambitious program because it's hard to, you know, inspect with one inspector all those rentals every year. And Susie does a great job with this program, so.
I have a question. Back to the fertilizer, but thank you for all of that because it has been confusing because I keep reading things in the newspaper, and I'm like, I think we did that. Or like, I'm like, I think we, that did go to town meeting and we voted on it. So is the fertilizer like the pesticide? Is it regulated by the state in the same way?
I think so, yes, because I remember when we talked about it, and I don't know if you remember this, Amy, when we talked about it with the Board of Health around the water system, we couldn't, and remember when we, they were doing the herbicide, trying to do the herbicide ban? You can't call out specific substances to be banned or excluded because of Massachusetts' general laws.
Right.
So I think that's why sort of we have to describe it without using names of
Products.
Products.
Right, and then the hope is that the state will notice and support us in this and maybe change
I don't know.
there.
Because it's, it's something, I believe it's preemptive law, where they're allowed to, you know, operate and sell these products in the state, and so for a town to ban it, it goes against that law.
Right, and we can't do something more strict than the state in that regard.
Correct.
Yeah.
But if the region takes it on as a unified message, I think we would have a lot more sway.
Well, and I think the businesses tend to feel more comfortable, too.
Exactly, like you said, so they can't just drive from this town and still do exactly the same thing.
Yeah, but I do think we not, we have to find, we have to look at this carefully and find a sweet spot that that we can agree on that's reasonable for for people to.
And what would our next steps be?
So, like you said, paying attention to what the region is doing right now and the county, I'm sorry, and then sending a letter of support to the county that the town of Eastham would like to see them move forward with stricter regulation around the use of fertilizer on Cape Cod.
Do we need to engage Eastham public, or will that be done through the town meeting process?
Maybe, I think, I think through the town meeting process as you guys discuss it, like, as it comes back to you. I can also ask Jane to, you know, and Conservation Commission to take a look at what they think of it and give you some advice, too. I mean.
So would it be an article to send the letter to the county?
No, I think we have to wait and see because the county could, they they have time, they could pass something that, I don't know if the county does an ordinance, how how far-reaching that is.
Usually locally accepted.
So they would put something, and then we would have to accept it?
Adopt it.
Okay.
Well, it's like the ADU bylaw.
Yeah.
So, you know, that was, that was Hack and a few groups together coming up with that language, and then all the towns agreed to adopt it, and we added our part for our zoning bylaws, but but that was a good initiative.
I still think we're the only town that allows part-time residents to build ADUs, though, which I'm shocked that more towns didn't do that.
Yeah, we just put that, that one of the units had to be year-round.
Year-round.
Yeah.
One of the two, yeah.
To increase your own housing stock.
Yeah, period.
Yeah, I feel, never mind. This can go off onto the ADUs. No one builds them.
Okay.
Well, we've had.
They're building them now.
They are. We have a couple.
We have, I think, 11.
Do we really?
Yeah.
Okay, because last time I checked, I was like, no one's building it.
It just takes, it takes time, it really does with these things.
And also that passed right around COVID, and
Yeah.
the idea of doing renovations and building is out, it's kind of, you know, intimidating. It takes time now.
And when, when we talk about the housing plan, I think on October 24th, when we talk about, you know, the timeline for that, you'll see that both Hack and CDP have some money for it, and we're going to try and coordinate with them to add our money to their money and see what we can do to get some of them moving along. But but there's quite a few in the pipeline at various and sundry steps.
All right, that's cool.
Great. All right. So we are all set on that, and you'll keep an eye on things.
Yeah, and I'll send it to Conservation and.
Great.
Karen would love it. She has some, ConsCom has regulations regarding fertilizer already.
Okay, next is CARE for the Cape and Islands Grant. I think, Amy, you had information on this one, is it about the water fill stations?
Yeah, the, we got the, well, the Chamber actually applied, I believe, for this grant to get the bottle filling stations, but then the town sort of stepped in because we were putting the filling stations around town anyway, so we said, let's just do it all together. So now there's a check
Yeah.
that I delivered to Jackie a week and a half ago. And Art and I went to the ribbon cutting at the visitor booth, and CARE was there, and they handed us a check for $2,600. And so, you know.
So that's why Art, Art's not here.
It was made out to the town.
Oh, okay.
And I took it, so.
Yeah.
I gave it to Jackie. But I was thinking, you know, and I, geez, I almost spilled all of myself, that these water bottles that we have, that the town, from the Water Division, using that money to purchase bottles like this, I don't know how everyone feels about that, and either, Joanna actually had a great idea of giving them to everyone who's on a committee.
Oh, that's a great.
A little, kind of a little perk for being on a committee.
The other thing we were thinking of, Jamie came up with, is, you know, maybe the first 50 people at town meeting get a free water bottle, so we could.
I think there's enough money to buy quite a few.
Yeah, prizes, prizes always help.
First incentives.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Put committees at the beginning.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We do nothing.
Yeah, we don't do, they don't.
The water bottle? Well, they can help me pull, they can help me put the chairs out.
Doorbusters.
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, Amy, that's good. All right.
So I'll put Kim on it, see how many we can get water bottles.
I bet you in bulk, we could probably get a lot more than, you know, if we only buy 100 or something.
All right, next we have Timothy Smith renewal loan application from Brittany Tilton. This, I don't believe, requires an interview since it's a renewal, correct?
Correct.
And it looked like she was doing great.
This is for the first year of her master's program.
Right, she's, yeah, at Mass Maritime. She graduated from UMass Boston.
I'll make a motion to approve the Timothy Smith renewal application for Brittany Tilton.
I'll second that.
Call the vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye.
Great.
And next is to vote to fund business exterior improvement program using ARPA funds.
This is a program that we designed, and our intention all along was to use ARPA funds for this because it is specific to business reinvestment. So Rich actually asked you to take a formal vote on this one for
Okay, yeah.
because we are spending money.
And this is out there, now people can apply, yeah?
Yep.
I actually had a few people in town, a few business owners that were excited to tell me that they are working on their application now, and, yeah, and they're really excited about it. And that was, I mean, from the, you know, when we first started, kind of throwing that idea around, you know, it's, it's awesome seeing it starting to come to fruition.
And I think if this works and we want to continue it, then it would just be probably something that we look for, free cash transfers at town meeting floors.
I think it's a great idea. So I just need a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we fund the business exterior improvement program using the ARPA funds.
Second.
Call the vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, ABCC, 2023 seasonal increase form.
And they send you this every year, and I don't know what it says this year.
30,000.
30,000.
Yeah, staying the same, so they're keeping it stable.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
No, wait.
ABCC.
AB.
Alcoholic beverages commission?
Control commission.
Okay, so.
That's a double C.
Why is there?
Why are they telling us this?
Yeah, I just wanted a little bit more background on that.
Because you're the, the town's licensing board, and what limit they set is one of the criteria that they use to determine how many liquor licenses you can give out.
Oh, okay.
The population.
The maximum, but we don't have to.
No, you don't have.
But it's seasonal liquor license.
Yes.
That's all this is about, not the year-round.
The year-round is based on population, but the seasonal is based on.
Well, on, on suburb pop, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, proposed bylaw, Lower Cape Community Access Television. This is information only.
Yeah, I don't.
Did you want to speak on this one, Jackie, or do you?
Not really. This is, I think this is the first time they've changed their bylaws in a while, and Teresa just sent these to you guys as a courtesy because we do fund this with the other four towns, four towns or three towns, four towns?
Four, I see.
I did look it over, and not having known what came previously, I wasn't, I was kind of hoping that maybe someone knew what the like highlights were, changes. Yeah.
I don't know because I didn't look at their original bylaws either, but, so, Lower Cape TV was incorporated when the first cable contracts were agreed upon between Comcast and the towns. So we created Lower Cape as an entity to manage the public broadcast portion of what was required, and I think they've done a pretty fantastic job, and especially the last few years, I think they've really come into their own. So I, I believe Teresa and the board is just trying to update and reflect any changes that they've made in the organization over the past 20 years.
I would.
Because this is their second 10-year contract, or is it that yet?
I had the same question, Suzanne, I was wondering if we could ask them to get.
You want me to, I can ask her for what the other copy was, like, what.
Right, or if they can, if it's in a program where they can do a
Sure.
compare, right, track the changes, and we can see that, and that would make it so that we could understand, there's a lot of verbiage, and we, I didn't know, have any idea what changed.
No, I'll ask her for that, I'm sure that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I can't imagine much of it's very different, to be honest.
Right.
And that's kind of what I figured, too, I just didn't know if there was something we should be like looking for in particular, or if it changes
Right.
any expectation that we have in either direction.
All right, so that is, you'll send that out, Jackie?
I will.
Okay. So the next is going to be committee resignations. So we have search committee, the finance committee appointment is Amy Hackworth, recycling committee, Amy Hackworth, and cultural council, Johanna Schneider.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations as listed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Call the vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye.
Just a quick, yep, backpedal, do we need to vote on the ABCC number?
I was also.
Oh, I think, I think you do vote on it, but I'm not sure why. Is it to receive it, perhaps? I don't know.
To certify it, maybe.
To certify, I think what we signed said certify.
Oh, okay.
We go back.
Usually anything you sign, we ask you to vote on.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion
It's safer.
that we certify the seasonal population for the ABCC at 30,000.
Second.
Thank you. Want to call the vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye.
Just in case.
No, thank you.
No, yeah.
It hurts to have an extra vote.
Lori and I have about 50 conversations a year based on, do they have to vote or can they just sign? At least 50.
All right, we have committee appointments. Conservation Commission, Michael Harnett, Climate Action Committee, Tom McNellis, and Eastham Housing Authority representative to the Community Preservation Committee, Eileen Morgan, and this is, these are all, we don't need to vote on these, or no, that last one.
Just the last one, you don't have to vote.
Do you, I feel like when I first joined the board, when there were new appointments, if you interviewed them, sometimes you guys said things, and I didn't know if you wanted. Michael Harnett served on the ConsCom previously, and of the few meetings I had to watch of him, he seemed very capable, and he has a background in it, and I think it's a wonderful addition to the board. I think before he had left because of some life things, and those have since resolved, and he's, I think, looking forward to being back on the board, and I'm excited to have him.
Great.
Thank you very much, Suzanne, it is nice to hear a little bit.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about Tom for the Climate Action Committee. He's attended meetings already, participates, and can't vote, but he very much participates. He, he has a lot of contacts and some great ideas, so he would, he will be a, a great addition to that, to that committee.
All right, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Michael Harnett to the Conservation Commission and Tom McNellis to the Climate Action Committee.
Second.
Call the vote, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye.
Jackie, is there a moment to shine in town?
The full report is online, and there's some details in it, but I think the highlights are John Roughly started, I think this is his third week as our new DPW superintendent, and hopefully I will bring him before you to meet soon. He's going to be at the project meetings on the 17th and the 24th, probably, that are coming up for you. So you'll get to meet him, he's doing a great job already, and we will be doing two meetings, two like workshops in your October meetings, the 17th and the 24th, on sort of a survey of all our town projects, where they are, what the timeline is, what the tasks are in on sort of a survey of all our town projects, where they are, what the timeline is, what the tasks are in the next, you know, 12 months or so. So I usually do that every few years, we haven't done it as extensively as I'm going to do it this year. Um, because there's a lot going on and I just want you guys to see the big picture, especially Jerry and Suzanne, um, before you set any new goals for this year. And I also want to just remind people that we are doing road paving of Massa Soyet, Haring Brook to Bridge, um, which will include some of Samasat. And that's probably going to be, uh, the first three weeks of October. So it'll be fast, but I think everyone's going to be very happy to get that whole road from the Wellfleet line all the way to Bridge Road paved.
The sandwich signs, great, I saw them.
Yeah, they're out there.
They're out there and I saw them and I was like, I would have never known otherwise, so they were effective.
Yeah, they're, Environmental Partners does a great job with communication, they really do. That is, that's why they're the A team, I think. But I just wanted to warn people because I know there's going to be a lot of excitement, but there may be some delays too.
And I forgot, like I forgot, I saw the signs and then I drove past them again and say, so multiple reminders, on the 17th and 14th, is that at our normal meeting time or?
Uh, the 24th might be an extra meeting for housing.
For October, right?
Yeah, because there's just so much of it and I don't want to stick it into it because you haven't, we haven't given you an update on the tasks and, um, projects for housing since we did the housing plan, so.
Well, because you said we, the la, it was in your report and you had mentioned the two.
And you were like, what about the 24th, that's not even on our list.
Is, that wasn't in the report, didn't you just say that?
I did, it is, but it's not on, I don't think it's on your select board list because I think we're going to make you add a meeting.
Okay, but it, will it still be at 5:30?
Oh, yes, yes.
I'll update the calendar and put it in, in one second for you.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. So see, that's why we skipped a September meeting because we know that there are times when we have to add them.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
We made it next Monday.
So. Continue.
Okay, uh, new and upcoming agenda items? If there's anything, I think we just kind of went over that actually, it sounded like, so, um, minutes.
Well, I, I had one question on the, just a question looking at the solar project.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I know from, at the time I was in the finance committee that, um, removing, at the town meeting when we removed the, around the, the plan around the, the pump station, that that made it a less advantageous offering for companies to come in and bid. The question I had was, we are now, we've, we have a contract out to, for the second, um, water tower and so forth, and we're going to disturb the land there. And the argument I remember hearing at the town meeting was the trees were already starting to grow, but if we have something that's already disturbed, can you do solar project there? And I just raised the question, I don't have a foggy id, the foggiest idea whether or not that's feasible or, or whatever, but to, to, to look at, potentially look at that.
Jerry, I don't think so. And part of the reason is both of those entities would want control over the area, right? So we would not want anyone to be around our tank or well that wasn't authorized to be there, nor would a solar company want anyone to be around their panels and their batteries. So I think really you have to have a secure area for both of those.
And while the area up by the current well station, you know, the trees, some trees are coming back up. That area is pretty small.
Yeah.
That was a small area.
So we tried to get them to go onto the power lines, but they didn't.
I know, yeah.
I think that'd be great, you wouldn't have to mow, you wouldn't have to.
So that project is kind of stalled right now, right?
Right.
Yeah, the latest update on that, and I can get you more, you know, details to the extent you want it, but basically, many of the projects across the Cape have been stopped. Couldn't come to terms with a provider, a developer, uh, trying to finalize contracts and, um, you know, the cost of steel and securing, uh, the components of doing it wasn't feasible and couldn't finalize a contract, so. All of these TAMs projects at this point are on hold. Um, I actually have to go back and look at, you know, they will revisit it at no cost to us, but it'll be a, a brand new procurement in a future year.
All right, thanks.
We need to go on to minutes.
All right.
All right, you have a vote.
Do you want a, a bulk motion or do, can, can we bulk motion them?
Unless anybody has any changes to minutes, we can do a bulk.
Is. I think Lori was going to change the one that had one issue.
I did and I put it back in one drive and corrected.
It's corrected, okay, we're good, I didn't, thank you. Do you need a separate motion on regular and then another one on the executive? Can all be done here? Okay. I move, we approve the minutes of regular session, July 25th, August 1st, August 15th, and August 29th, and the executive session on July 25th.
Second.
Call the vote Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, unless there's any other business or correspondence, I will make a adjournment motion and become the Board of Water Commissioners.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn regular session of the Board of Select, or Select Board, not to return to regular session and adjourn as Water Commissioners. I threw that in earlier.
Second.
I'll sit.
Okay, and call the vote Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And aye.
All right. Now it's made.
Yeah.
This should be a quick one.
Where are we at here?
No, Jerry has lots of questions.
No, I have, yeah, I have some questions on it, yeah. Well, you got to call us in.
All right, so we are Water Commissioners. Um, so we're talking first about the extension of the water supply to the Wellfleet Drive-In.
Yeah, that contract is ready, so I'm just looking for your, uh, signature, that, that contract was, um, executed with, not Darren Klein, what am I saying, Greg Corbo of Copman and Page, um, and Ben Zender representing the Drive-In, so.
I, I have.
Uh-oh. The lawyer's going to speak.
Yeah, just, just some, some questions, the first one, which will, if the answer is correct, it'll eliminate a lot of mine, but $250,000 pick, hookup fee, does that cover the cost? The full cost of extending the line from up Route 6 to the, to the Drive-In?
Yes, so it covers just to the Drive-In.
Right.
So the whole cost of that extension, if we did the whole loop, is 1.3 million dollars. But 250 is the Drive-In cost alone. And there is a, uh, they're going to pay the actual cost. So if it's less than 250, they don't pay that. If it's more than 250, we're going to try and make them pay that too.
Okay. That, that answers a whole slew.
And we're used.
That answers a lot of stuff for me.
You had a flow chart.
Basically using a formula, um, you know, the same formula that if you were an Eastham property owner and you had to take on the cost of water, which you've had to do, we're using that exact formula, it's just they're going to pay it as a different fee over the next 20 years than, than because obviously we can't tax them, but it's based on the value of their real estate.
One of the things that I, one of the things that caused me some concern was the contract ends, well, they, they could end the contract with 180 days notice. Or the contract ends if the property, if the owner sells and the new owner doesn't adopt the contract. So looking at a thing where they're paying over the, the 250,000 over 10 years, if in five years, the Drive-In is sold to, to me, and I don't accept this, what happens with that 10-year, the 10-year payment string?
Well, it's, the only situation that I can imagine that that would happen is if Wellfleet extended their water line all the way from Main Street down to the Drive-In because the development of the Drive-In is 100% contingent on a water supply. Because they have five public water supply wells there now. This will replace those water supply wells. And then once they're replaced and there's development over them, there's no way that they'll have the space to redo that. So I think it's pretty much a lock and it's, I, I honestly think that, you know, they'd probably easily spend $250,000 doing replacement wells, so.
Um, yeah, well, uh, okay. Oh, and it's only one water, it's only one curb stop.
That's right.
So if they, if I buy it and decide I'm going to put in so many housing units, I've got to figure out how to divide that up and do it up.
So we do what we did here, we stop at the end of the property and then they're going to be responsible for taking it into the new development there.
All right. That's, that's fine. The other was the $7,500 a year. Uh, I agree with it, it's just, does it go? Does it go forever?
I think it's a term of 20 or 30 years, whatever our water loan is.
Oh, okay, I didn't, somehow I, I must, I missed that, my error.
Maybe I just put it in forever.
That's right. That's okay, it, that, that's fine. The only, the only other thing, uh, was, I guess we assume that Wellfleet will allow us to, um, dig up the road if there's some pro.
The Board of.
Problem that we have.
The Board of Water Commissioners and Wellfleet has voted to allow this to happen already.
Okay, that's good. And the only other question which was not in the contract was one of the things when, when, last, our last meeting, to make the loop coming up west to Route 6 and down.
Yeah.
To hit us, well, Massa Soyet to west, was it to, down, down Route 6. Uh, there was a thing, they were talking about the state wanting to redo, repave or do something with Route 6 and Wellfleet. Will this occur before, potentially before that, does that cause us any issues or anything?
We, we hope so. So I haven't discussed this with the DOT yet, but, um, the town administrator of Wellfleet told me that the DOT's plan to start construction from the Wellfleet line to the Truro line was the fall of 2023. So whether, that's a fast timeline for us to get
Yeah.
things out to bid, all the permitting done, because we have to cross that creek, that wetland. So it requires, you know, a lot of permitting. So, so we're going to try and get it done, but again, I haven't confirmed with the DOT, but that would definitely put a crimp in this plan.
Yeah, well, I, I've asked a lot of questions and stuff, but I, I think this is wonderful. So I just commend you.
Plan though, to have it next to the highway? Like.
We, they, there's, we're going to try, always try, but they, I think that, um, an ex-employee of DOT that lives in Eastham who will remain unnamed has told me that they think there's some conduit in that area, so. But there's also a lot more space, as soon as you cross the Wellfleet line, there's a lot more space, so. It could be possible that we can tuck it in outside of the road, but within the layout, maybe, so.
Is the DOT not interested in coordinating these things?
The DOT probably would coordinate if the town of Wellfleet and Truro, I mean, if everyone would agree, but I don't, I don't know. And again, are they going to be on schedule for this project? I don't know, so we have to talk to them and start doing that. I, it's possible for us to coordinate just that extension, that little extension
Right.
in this amount of time, but it's a tight timeline.
Right.
Thank you, and I apologize for, uh.
No, thank you, those are all great questions.
Those are good questions.
The squeaky wheel.
Now, we already did vote on the extension, so we're just signing today. I think it already passed.
No vote is required, no vote.
No votes recorded on this?
Oh, yeah.
No, I can, I waited to sign that one thing, yes.
And then the next is ju, the next item is just the loans that you voted, the contract you voted on, and this is the acceptance of the loans.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the next thing is vote to approve the details and issuance of three loans uh, to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust.
All right.
Second. Wait, you need a motion, sorry, I was trying to help him.
You can just.
So moved.
So moved, so moved, thanks.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, aye.
And aye.
All right, four to zero. And minutes from August 29th for the Board of Water Commissioners. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 29th, 2022, Board of Water Commissioners.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, aye.
And aye.
Four to zero. Any other business to do with water? Already talked about our maybe water bottle plan.
Yep.
Hopefully we'll. Have some videos on that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, and it's more just to remind people and for me to have more details. There is, do we have a program to help residents hook up to town water?
Yes.
And, uh, does anyone want to restate it in case someone's made it this far in our meeting?
Um, we have, don't we have one person?
Because I didn't know it existed until very recently.
It was just passed, I mean, we, we passed it a year ago and we put money in it this spring.
Okay.
And so now we have one person applying, but you can.
I think there's a waiting list, I think we have one person that's, has applied, but I do think there are more on a list that are in.
Process.
Yeah.
Yeah, one person has totally taken advantage of it and they're.
Been approved.
Water being installed and then we do have a waiting list.
But it is a loan program and basically Kim St. Aubin, our water clerk, will walk anyone through, um, I believe the application's online, but if it's not, just, they could just call Kim over at the water department. Um, and it's a betterment, so it's added to your tax bill over time. So it's an affordable way to hook up and, and have the payments spread out.
Sweet, thank you, just in case someone else was listening and didn't know.
No, absolutely. All right, any other business?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
We're all here, so we don't have to call and roll, but we're so used to.